So Nate, if you would like to lead a Sydney invocation. And I thank Nate Kingsley for being here for the last month doing that for us. We really appreciate that.
My pleasure, and thanks to you. These days, it's always easier to complain about governance than to do it. So I'm thankful for you for doing that. Father, I want to say thanks to you. Thank you that I get to live where I do. And I love our town, our people. So you give them grace to do their job tonight. And make good decisions for the good of people. To do what is just, right, gracious, and good. Would you ordain that? Because I know all authority comes from you. So we're thankful for those who have taken up this role. And give grace to do it tonight. In Jesus' name I ask, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Nate. Thank you. That makes a big difference, doesn't it? Thank you. The clock is slow. Yeah, I'm looking at my phone here. I could buy an app to be right. Okay, we're good to go. It's seven o'clock. So I'll call the meeting to order and ask you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Shirley, would you take all the questions? Mayor Hammond? Here. Larry Lambert? Here. Mike Cahn? Here. Beth Porter? Mindy Galavich? Here. Malkazi? Here. Kristen Beal? Here. Beth Porter, yes. Looking for approval of our agenda for tonight?
I move that we adopt the agenda as printed.
Second.
We have a motion from Kamau, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now looking for approval of our council meeting minutes of April 17.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from April 17, 2025 regular meeting.
We didn't...
I just added that.
But we didn't have minutes from that meeting. Okay. So we have a motion from Mike, seconded by Kamau. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have anyone here for a pre-approved report or presentation? Anyone here for a public comment? Shirley, do you have communications for us?
So the Greater Langsberg recyclers, they will be having their recycle dates Tuesday, May 6 through 46, Saturday, May 10 from 9 to 1, Tuesday, May 20 from 46, and Saturday, May 24 from 9 to 1. They sent over... I gave everybody a flyer. There's some flyers up there, and we'll have them upstairs. It looks like they are going to start doing a food scrap wrap-off program. So it's kind of interesting. Yard sales, May 16 through the 18th. You can register on our website. There'll be a link there. Perry Cleanup Week, May 19 through the 23rd. Dumpster will be up at the city... or up at the DPW, and you can bring your items there. And then Memorial Day Parade, May 24 at 11 o'clock, hosted by the VFW. Hosted in the city of Perry, organized by the VFW. And then there was... The Historical Society, their summer market starts in June. June 14 is the first day. I'll just keep reporting on that as it gets closer, which will be before Memorial, or will be here.
And Cleanup Week is only for residents, correct?
Only for residents.
So be sure to bring your ID with you when you go, just in case. Moving on then to Mayor and Department Head reports. Kevin, would you like to go first?
Sure. Hello, hey, everybody.
Hi, Kevin.
Hi, Kevin. We completed our spring yard waste cleanup. We did the old back out. Backed out all the bollif leaves. We started doing bag cleanup in April and brush chipping. We had modded the high volumes across the board. Our guys did a good job keeping everything flowing and clean. So a lot of residents utilize that service, so we're happy to oblige. We've been working on packing away winter equipment, getting ready for spring and summer operations. We've started mowing all the city properties in necessary locations that we maintain. We are looking at scheduling for the resurfacing of Third Street from Main to Williams. Supposed to be with Dave tomorrow for Michigan paving to go over the particulars on that, which was a budgeted project. We try to do some paving every year. We completed our second runoff of the season out at the Lagoons. Wanted to report that heighter flushing will begin on Monday. We'll keep the same schedule that we normally do, doing a section of town each day until it's completed. The information is available on the city website, and I believe everyone was given that information. Dealing with Eagle on corrosion control. There was some questions with our control plan. They requested that we use a different blend of ortho and polyphosphate. Once they approve things on their end, we're going to have to bring it back to council for reapproval. It'll be a different product with the cost is different and the process will be the same. It's just there's particulars that we have to get reapproved based on the state recommendations. They probably won't approve it. We're going to follow their guidelines for their recommendations on that. So still moving forward with the corrosion control. The sign purchase for the property south of town. I did not move ahead with that. There was an inquiry on the property, a pretty serious inquiry, and we're waiting to see how that plays out before we spend the money on the sign and do the installation. It would have been silly to put it up and then sell. So I held off on that. We should know within the next few weeks if it's going to go or not. Depending how that turns out, then we'll order the sign again. And so most of the ones have been watching for us, but we haven't done it yet, so that's fine. And we've talked and are looking into scheduling and official groundbreaking for the DPW building. I was wondering if anybody had any recommendations on a date or a time that would work for the door of the council. We're talking about inviting city staff, council members, representative from parent construction. The mayor had mentioned some of the people that were involved in helping us with the funding. So I kind of wanted to ask council's opinions on if there was a day or a time that would work best for everybody. If you guys... We can talk about it here, or we can talk about it later. Do some emails or however you want to handle it. But that's kind of where we're at with that. And there is an agenda item to talk more about that building later. So that's all I got.
Anybody have questions on any of these subjects or others? For Kevin?
Just as far as the date goes, like do us a week or two timeframe on when you want to have it and narrow it down from there.
All right.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We have officially entered the fourth quarter of our budget cycle. So we'll start wrapping things up. I think it seems early since it is just May. Can't believe it's already May. So we'll have a third quarter budget report for you next meeting. I don't anticipate any amendments needing to be made. Everyone looks pretty on track. We did receive our delinquent tax payment for the county. So when tax season ends in March, we send them our roll. We report what's collected, what's not. The county then pays us out for any that were delinquent at the time they were sent to the county, and that becomes their responsibility to collect past due taxes. So we didn't receive that payment this week. It was about $49,000. And I do have to transfer some of that to other entities, like the library and SESA. They handle everything that goes with school. I don't have to fully disperse it like I do normal taxes. I also just received today the pilot paperwork. That's the facility, the apartments that pay payment in lieu of taxes. They pay a portion of their income for the year, less utilities. That's a whole formula based on their audit. So I received that paperwork today. So we'll start that rolling. We'll have those funds in by the end of the year as well. Kevin and I went to Nash Nurseries and bought some trees for the playground as part of the fundraiser. Landscaping was included. We'll get those in the ground. And the final thing I'm waiting for on the playground before we can host a groundbreaking... not, sorry, not a groundbreaking, like a grand opening, is a sign. I've been trying to get in touch with the sign people that usually do the signs for our building, and they're the ones that did the signs for the medallions on the pavilion. I'm going to have to go somewhere else, I think, because I'm just having a really hard time getting a hold of them. So I want those two things in the ground. Really fingers crossed, waiting for the pavilion to be done as well. They're putting the brickwork on it as we speak. They've been here for a few days now. I really want both of those projects to be complete and have like one big look at our park rather than having a construction zone across from it. So that's the holdup with doing the formal grand reveal with the NBC that gave us the grant. And we will invite donors to that as well over time. And that's all I have until we talk about the next big thing on the agenda.
Anybody questions for Megan?
Sure.
Thank you. Shirley?
Yes, I have just two things. We have an election coming up on May 6. Polls open at 7:00 a.m. They close at 8:00 p.m. That will be next Tuesday, so next week.
One for... Sorry.
The school.
Oh.
The school election. Remember she was here a couple weeks ago?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, it's okay. And then...
I'm sorry. I mistreated you.
So, yeah, there's the election. And then the other thing is I wanted to report like the first quarter of the year, January through March, what we have brought in for zoning permits and building permits. So as of right now, we have had two new housing zoning permits. One fence permit, one sidewalk patio repair or replace permit, and one shed permit. We've had 12 electrical... no, that's zoning. This is going to be building. 12 electrical permits, six plumbing permits, 10 mechanical permits, two housing permits. And then miscellaneous, we've had 10 permits. It'll be like windows, ramps, siding, roof, solar panel on the roof. And so that's the first quarter. I'll try to do this every quarter.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
We appreciate that a lot.
We have had a site plan review come in, but that was in April. So that's going to go to Planning Commission. We're meeting for May 5 and also a rezoning. So we'll just report on that when it comes here. So, yep.
Any questions for Shirley? Thank you, Shirley. Kyle's not here. I don't have anything. Committee reports.
I'll just report that the ordinance committee is holding a follow-up meeting this next Thursday. It'll be May 8 at 10 a.m. here in council chambers. Continue our discussion on a few minor revisions that will ultimately be brought in forward to the council for their consideration.
Thank you, Larry. Looking now at presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. We don't have any old business on the agenda, so we'll move into new business. Our first item there is to move into public hearing. So I'm looking for...
We don't have to motion.
We don't have to motion that one? Okay, then I'm not looking for anything. Now at 7:15, we are going to move into our public hearing in regard to the budget and millage rates. Megan?
So we had our budget workshop on the... Is it the 18th of April?
17th.
17th of April. Okay. Nothing on the budget from none of you in front of me today has changed from that meeting. Not that meeting with any asks for improvements. So it's nothing new to point out to you. Shirley did have a conversation very preliminary with the insurance company. Insurance rates are coming in almost exactly as we projected. We projected a 15% increase. Right now, if we stay with the same plan we have, it's in the 13% range. That'll be more discussion at the next council meeting. But just so you know, the budget will... From the number we're seeing, will accommodate the options that they've offered us to consider. As far as the millage rate, the motion you have in front of you is a not-to-exceed motion. And that not-to-exceed is the current year's millage rate. This is not typically what we do. Because of the Headley rollback, we are assessing the maximum millage rate that we can as a city. So we don't know what next year's rate is going to be until we receive this form called an L428 that's from the Michigan Department of Treasury. It's the Millage Reduction Fraction Computation. And it gives me a percentage of how much the current year's millage rate has to roll back. I have that number. The assessor received it last week. And then she immediately received an email saying, whoa, we've noticed some errors in formulas on that sheet. Hold up, we're going to send a new one. They haven't sent a new one yet. We don't know what they're changing. So I don't want to commit to the millage rate that I think it's going to be and have it have to go up or down. It will not be any more than what it is this year. It will be less. I just don't know how much less. Those are my two major things to point out from the budget.
Council, do you have any comments or questions for Megan? Anything in regard to the budget or millage rate? Public? This is public hearing. If anyone from the city has any questions about the budget or the millage rate? Megan is the lady to ask those questions, too. Yes, Dana?
Does that mean taxes will go down if the millage rate goes down?
It doesn't because you're... Because of inflation. Across the state of Michigan, they determine what is the inflation rate. So the last two or three years, it's been 5%. It's inflation or 5%, whichever is less. So the last couple of years, you've had a taxable value increase of 5%. This year, it's in the 3-point-something range. I apologize. I didn't think to get that from... I mean, but it would have been in the notices that you received back in March about your property values. That's why the Headley Act was enacted a while ago, because your taxable value is going up and it's reducing the millage rate with it. So it's not like a double whammy. The millage rate isn't going up.
Just balances out.
The taxable value to the city does increase some because you have new builds. So you have new things coming out of the tax roll. And odds are inflation is greater than what the rollback is, but...
Has there been... Has there been any measures or thought towards... I mean, and I haven't looked over... I mean, I have it here, but I haven't looked through it all. But what exactly the millage is covered? But is the city actually looking at steps to reduce waste, right?
Oh, yeah. We look at those. When we were in our budget workshop on the 17th, absolutely. We went line item by line item and absolutely looked at that. And we do that every year.
And I'm hoping. I mean, I'm actually having zero knowledge right now, so...
I think that's a good question, Chris. Just to hear us verify that, yes, we are watching for that.
I guess I'm assuming that making sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck as a taxpayer. How about looking at that?
I believe you are. We are. I'm a taxpayer, too.
Right.
We all are. So we would hope for the same thing.
This budget wouldn't allow for a reduction in the current old rate.
Right.
Maybe in the future, one day, it's our say.
If there's no further questions from the public, then here at 7:20, we'll close the public hearing. And then look at number two on our agenda. City millage rate possible approval.
I move that we set the city of Perry's millage rate not to exceed 12.5523 mill.
I second. We have a motion from Kamau, seconded by Kristen. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Then moving into our third item, which is possible approval of the city's 2025-2026 budget. I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas... Oh, do I have to read all that? Dang. Okay. Whereas a public hearing was held and all comments were heard regarding the proposed 2025 and 2026 budget of all city funds and general ledger by the activity number form and all other funds by revenue and expense totals. And whereas the revenue and expenses totaled are itemized as follows. General fund revenue... Oh, my goodness. General fund expenses, $1,726,729. Highway major revenue, $206,800. Highway major expenses, $261,612. 619. Oh, 600... No, I'm sorry. 619. Thank you. Good catch. Highway local revenue, $144,325. Highway local expenses, $168,575. Parks revenue, $7,800. Parks expenses, $10,000. Drug fund revenue, $36. Drug fund expenses, zero. McQueen revenue, $60. McQueen expenses, zero. Sewer fund revenue, $592,000 in... 520... Wait a minute. Sewer fund expenses, $609,520. Water fund revenue, $483,425. Water fund expenses, $570,618. City hall fund revenue, $5,600. City hall fund expenses, $5,200. Motor pool fund revenue, $212,140. Motor pool fund expenses, $216,095. Office pool revenue, $43,400. Office pool expenses, $42,700. Therefore, said budget be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion from Kristen. Good job, Kristen, reading all that. Thank you. Seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Megan, for all your hard work. And Department Heads, for all your hard work. Thank you, council, for spending all that time in the workshop and working toward getting this budget approved before the end of the month. Next on our agenda, number four, is sale of the DPW old Vector truck. Kevin, do you want to talk to us about that?
I will. Some of you know... I don't know if all of you are here when we received the purchase of the new Vector truck. We had one little hiccup with a speck on it, which we corrected with a pump-off unit. There's no reason for us to retain the old truck other than moral support and comfort that we have to, but it's not necessary. So I'm asking council to approve the sale of the truck by auction. We will put a reserve on it because of the value of the truck. And that's pretty much all I got, so...
How will you know what reserve to put on it?
I was going to do a $15,000 reserve. I feel the truck will go for double that or more. But it'll give buyers incentive that they'll reach the mark. And then hopefully it draws some attention and gets, you know, a lot of bids. It's a very useful truck still. And I don't anticipate it going cheap. So we've had good results. We're going to give shared an auction again. We sold the bucket truck with them. We did really well on that. We sold our old one-ton dump truck with them. We did really well on that. So I don't anticipate anything different with this piece of equipment.
Okay.
New one's got only upfitting enhancements done to it now?
Correct.
And to send it out, get some more done after you first got it?
Yep. Everything's been completed, which we feel comfortable. We've used it enough to... We haven't found any bugs to work out or anything like that. So I think it's time. We need the space. So it's... That's something we can't really park outside. That type of equipment doesn't do well outside for long periods of time, especially over the winter months. We would have had to winterize it, unwinterize it, winterize it, and it would have been raining. So now that the weather's good enough for it to sit outside and go to the auction lot, and hopefully somebody buys it and puts it to good use.
Any other questions for Kevin? Comments regarding this sale? Looking for a motion?
I move that we approve the sale of the Vector truck at auction. Kevin Tyler is authorized to send the truck to Sheridan Auction Yard and move forward with the necessary details to accomplish the sale.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Kamau. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Number five is a resolution regarding the SESA increase. Any discussion in regard to this, council?
I move that we approve the following resolution. Resolve that whereas on March 4, 2021, the city of Perry created the ambulance services special assessment district, and the district has subsequently been renewed. And whereas the city is required to make it... has subsequently been renewed, and whereas the city is required to make a redetermination of cost for the district yearly at the first city council meeting in May, and whereas the city reserved the right to increase the assessment at the time of the annual redetermination amount not to exceed 10% of the cost established for the prior year. Therefore, the city of Perry does determine to establish the annual ambulance services special assessment at $130 per unit. The city assessor is directed to spread the assessment upon the city July 2025 tax roll.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now we'll call on Kevin again to talk about the revision to the DPW barn design.
Through the natural process of working through the next steps of the DPW barn build, I was having a conversation with Eric Perrin, who's the project manager from Perrin Construction. And during our discussion, he talked about getting the footings ready to bring everything up to grade, so that when the framing crew is available, they can come and frame it out. And he talked about bringing the block up to grade. And I asked him, I said, which part of the building is block? And he said, the, the salt containment portion of the building is going to be block 10 feet high, referring to a single course of grounded and reinforced block. And I said, well, that's not really what we had in mind for this. And so we pulled out the plans and looked at it, and it was drawn up as a single course of eight-inch block to retain many tons of salt. We talked to the architect who drew it up, and with my conversation with him, he said, I, I recommended that that be poured wall. And that was the conversation to him and I had when we did our site visit initially to kick off the project, when he, when he made the initial drawings, is we both agreed on a poured wall footing. And somehow it got drawn in as block, which, which was not correct. So during that determination and going over and up to the next steps and planning for what's to come, it was determined that that's not sufficient. So we had to request that he redraw it based on what Perrin Construction recommended we put in there for the retaining walls for the salt storage portion of the building, which would be reinforced poured concrete. And Mr. Porter, who's not here tonight, had asked me in a previous meeting when we were discussing the building, he said, that's, that's all sound, you know, good reinforced concrete walls. And I told him, yes, because in my brain, for our original conversation, those walls were reinforced poured concrete. And I don't know how it got drawn up as block, but that's what was bid, was for block. Everyone bid the same thing, so I feel like the bid is valid. But we caught this before they started construction, and we had to revise it after we were, it'd be more costly to catch it down the road as opposed to catching it now, through the natural course of working through the plans and taking next steps. So the architect was gracious enough to redraw the plans over the weekend and bring them to us on Monday so that we could get them in on the agenda for approval. And I feel like this is a win for us as opposed to playing catch-up if we would have let it go any further. So that's, that's kind of how we got where we are. And it's a lot easier to fix it now by doing some paperwork and approvals than it is to start building and then have to revise it later, so.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm really glad you caught it, but, I mean, if they're mistaking, if they're doing that errors, and we're still in the beginning, how will it be moving forward down the road when actually, I mean, are there going to be more errors, more things that will come up, or are we going to be smooth sailing afterwards? I know it's something, I don't know if it's something you can answer, but...
Well, it wasn't an error, I mean, I don't mean to interrupt here, but it wasn't an error by the contractor.
Oh.
It wasn't an error, I mean, it was an error, but it, it wasn't an error by the contractor. He bid what the, yeah, he bid what the plans were for.
Correct. I'm not sure how it got drawn up the way that it did. During our initial conversation, which was months ago, everything went into motion, and then we were stamped, and we got stamped and sealed plans, so once that is received, you can't make any changes to the plans unless we do a revision like we're doing now. It has to be redrawn, recertified, and, and reapproved. So it's stamped, it'll be, it'll have a certification on it, which the building inspector will then approve. We should be able to move forward as planned. I'm just glad that we caught it before we started construction.
And Kamal, I, I don't, didn't mean to jump on you about that, because when I first heard about this, I immediately called Eric Perrin and said, well, what are you doing? How did this come up? How did this get happened? And he said, Mr. Mayor, so come down from the ceiling, and let me tell you, when Kevin and I were talking about this, it was like a light bulb. We recognized that Kevin thought it was poured wall, the plans were not poured wall, they were block, that's what was bid. So, I mean, he, he was very gracious about it. He was, you know, very...
Very understanding as well, that's good, that's good to work.
So I asked him if it would delay the project at all, and he said, no, it would not.
Backs up, it sounds like there was miscommunication or lack of communication between your walkthrough and the architect actually finding the specs.
And then we, we never revisited it. So there wasn't any questions during that process. I let him do his thing, and he works remotely, you know, there was very little interaction while he was doing the drawings, so it just wasn't communicated thoroughly. And that's probably, in part, you know, my responsibility to make sure that everything in there is correct, which I reviewed the plans quite a bit. There was a lot of questions during the bid process. I was cover to cover on those plans several times, and I didn't notice. I noticed that it looked like block in the drawings, but I thought it was going to be like a decorative stamped concrete block to, to look for aesthetics. I didn't realize that that's the way it was drawn in there. So, you know, working together with the contractor, he explained to me what, what, how it was drawn up, and I said, well, that's, that's not what we want, so here we are.
I move that we approve the changes made by the DP, to the DPW barn salt storage building by work, golf architects, and approve the payment, give them $100 for the additional work.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Kamal. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now we're looking at the change in the construction price, and looking for a motion in regard to that.
I move that we approve an additional $12,000 to Perrin Construction due to the changes made to the DPW barn salt storage building. The total of the contract not to exceed $256,100. We authorize Kevin Tyler to move forward with the building.
Second.
We have a motion for Mike, seconded by Kamal. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you, I appreciate your understanding.
Good catch.
Good catch, yeah. Okay, this next one, number eight, is more of an informational thing, but it's based on communication from our city attorney. I'm going to have a total knee replacement May 14th. I will be housebound because of the requirement to use a walker, and I have three steps to get into my house, no matter which way you go. So I won't be in and out of the house for two weeks. So I talked with our attorney and said, may I work from home? He said, hmm, good question, I'll be back to you. So he looked everything up, you guys I think have copies of that email, and he does emphasize that I need to ensure transparency, maintain public trust, and it would be advisable to inform the city council and the public about the temporary remote work arrangement and its expected duration. So I would expect that would be May 15th through the 27th. Ensure that all duties, including attending meetings and overseeing departments, are effectively managed during this period. And Larry Lambert, our mayor pro temp, has agreed to chair the meeting on the 15th, and then coordinate with city staff to facilitate communication and workflow. We have made sure that I can access my email from home, and my husband is very willing to drive stuff back and forth if need be, so. Or you guys can come and have lunch with me, that would be fine, too. So in summary, both the state law and the city of Perry's governing documents allow me to perform my duties from home temporarily due to medical limitations. So this is basically just letting you know that that will be the case. Any other business that may come before counsel at this time? Seeing none, I'll move to new public comment. Any public comment? How about counsel discussion and observations?
None.
None, okay. Agenda items for our next meeting? None?
May you tell me that she's going to be ready with a third quarter budget review?
I would sometime, maybe in June or even July, like to have on our agenda for counsel to review the master plan together at a meeting, looking at suggestions for city improvements, relying on the master plan to point us in the right direction. Before that, though, Shirley will need to know if council members require printed copies of the master plan pages, or if you each will bring your laptop or some other device to view those pages while we're meeting. So if you need printed copies, please let Shirley know sometime in the next six weeks.
And I'd suggest that we consider having the rest of the planning commission participate in at least that portion of the meeting when we do it as well.
Sure, that would be a good idea. Now what date is the meeting now?
I'm sorry?
The, when? Six weeks we have, I need to let you know. We didn't, we didn't set a date for it. Would you like to set a date for it now? No, I, six weeks is, we didn't, we got plenty of time there. Yeah, I'm thinking June or July, but we can talk about it maybe at the first or second meeting of June, and then... Anybody else have any agenda items?
No.
No? Okay. I will adjourn the meeting now at 7:42.